It is 10 o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Ms. Miskowski is here. We have two members present. We need eight, more for a quorum. It's 15 minutes after 10:00. And we have five members present. And if we don't rush in here pretty soon, we're going to adjourn for lack of a quorum. Go get them. Mr. Fierro, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Holden. Ms. Calanter, would you please come to the council chamber? We're going to adjourn in a few minutes if we don't have a quorum. We have nine members present. We need one for a quorum.
Ms. Calanter is on her way down.
Yeah, I know. They walk slowly.
And Mr. Holden is on his way.
If we didn't have all these commissioners to approve today, I would say we were adjourned. But it's very rude of council members to approve. Mr. Burnson, why don't we just introduce the commissioners-to-be and then adjourn for lack of a quorum? I don't think it's fair to them. So they won't have to come back. Could we do that, Mr. Burnson?
I think we can, Mr. President. Let me open the agenda.
Well, we do have a quorum now.
We have a quorum, okay.
Yeah, we're... Okay, call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fierro, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Lee, Thomas, Wornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, let me point out that this is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 14th day of June of the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35. And we're also being monitored by council phone. The first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Burnson moves, Ms. Goldberg second. There's no objection, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Items two, three, and four, applicants request continuance to July 12th.
Is there any objections to that? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Item 33, the Housing Department has advised that matter can be received and filed in as much as the violations have been corrected.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Items 35 and 36, the Housing Department's requesting two-week continuance to June 28th.
That's 35 and 36?
Yes, Mr. President.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
And on the closed session, items 54A and item 55, the city attorney has advised those matters should be continued to Friday, June 16th.
Okay, if there are no objections, unanimous vote. Okay, the next item.
Next item, Mr. President, you have commissioners, items 5 through 16 are area planning commissioners, confirmation. Items 5 through 9 are planning commissioners for East LA.
All right, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I'd like to ask the following prospective commissioners from the East Los Angeles Area Planning Commission to please come to the front tables. Ms. Helmy A. Hisrich, Ms. Lori H. Weir, Ms. Yolanda Chavez, Mr. Philip Barbaro Jr., and Mr. Jose L. Huzar, East Los Angeles Planning Commissioner's perspective. I have personally met with these five commissioners. They are all interested in serving. They are all qualified and meet the requirements of the city new charter. I found them to be, I thought, prepared to undertake a new experiment, which is going to be interesting for all of us. And we also had them before our committee, and the committee unanimously approved them as commissioners. And I would so move, Mr. President.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, we have five through nine.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Ms. Goldberg.
Since this is an area that's going to affect my district dramatically, even though I won't be in this chair anymore, I just wanted to ask each of you, as I recall, each of you lives in the area, right?
That's correct.
What do you think in terms, and just briefly, because I don't want to hold this up, just briefly, what do you think are the critical pressing land use problems in the area that you'll be looking at? As you, just generally speaking, I'm not asking for a treatise, but I just want to get some feel for how you're looking at what this awesome, I think, task, an exciting task, is going to be. So maybe start with you, Ms. Hisrich, if you wouldn't mind.
I think that, in my opinion, the most pressing issues are really quality of life issues, concerns that the residents have for particularly small corridors, commercial corridors, and the existing businesses that have been there for a long time and really trying to be fair to both sides.
Just to add to that, I believe some of the most pressing issues are the lack of affordable housing, the need for economic development, that while providing that type of economic vitality protects the community and its vibrancy and integrity and the great single-family home or single-family neighborhoods in that area.
There's a lot of issues. I worked on the community plan.
I remember that.
To put it in a nutshell, I would say the challenge would be balancing infrastructure with positive, good development in this area.
Development that is compatible with the communities and, as was said before, quality of life issues within those respective communities.
I would think that affordable housing is probably one of the more pressing needs. As a board member of the East LA Community Corporation, I've been involved with some of those issues, and I've seen some of those needs as well. But I think also balancing the residential needs with also the need for continued economic development is also a pressing need.
Okay, well, I think those are wonderful answers. I'm very excited that you're going to be our planning commission for the east side. I just want to add one note, which is, is that I think the challenge is really going to be, because we do need affordable housing, how not to increase the density unless the schools, parks, and libraries and other amenities are also in place. Because there is a tendency in our area to increase density, but not put in all of the other things that make life livable in those areas. So I personally wanted to add that to your many challenges, and I wish you all very much good luck, and I will move their ratification.
Okay, we have five through nine. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
You've been approved, and we want to thank you for serving the city, and we'll send that forthwith.
Congratulations.
Which means it can be reconsidered tomorrow.
Yes.
And the next item.
We have some more commissioners, Mr. President.
Yeah, I know.
We have the West Los Angeles area, item number 10. I'd ask Ms. Flora Gil Crisiloff to please come to the center table. Also, sharing the page here.
Tracy Cahill.
Mrs. Tracy Cahill and Mr. Dwayne Hall. Those three are nominated to the West Los Angeles Area Commission. We have, I have personally interviewed all of them and found them to be capable. They all live in the district, and they're all willing to serve, and I think that they are good appointments. The committee also met and unanimously approved them, and I would so move.
Okay, Ms. Calanter.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Hall, but I've not met Ms. Cahill before, and therefore I'd like to take a moment to ask you some of the questions I would have asked you if we had just met. Can you give me a little idea of what your, I understand that you live in Venice, and as do I. And I am not aware, since I don't find a resume attached to the file, all I know about you is you're an attorney. Could you tell me a little bit about your particular interests as a planning commissioner in terms of planning issues?
Yes, I'm, I come to this with...
Yes, I'm, I come to this with wanting to serve the community and wanting to make sure that the area that I live in is developed in a way that makes my quality of life good and also keeps jobs in our area. I'm a partner in a law firm. I don't practice land use law, so I'll be bringing to this the skills that one, to make good decisions that benefit our community.
Part of the reason I'm asking the questions is that, as you probably know, we have a Venice Community Planning Advisory Committee that's been running for years now, and so we do have a number of outlets that have been in place. What you're being appointed to is obviously a new one that's not been in place before. I have to say, I don't think jobs is the issue on the west side. I think the issue is housing, and I'm curious to know if you have any particular views about, for example, affordable housing or other related planning issues.
Affordable housing is obviously a keen issue, but also the density in our particular area where we live and certain, and the transportation problems that arise out of that, and making sure that there are good schools and the rest that needs to fall in place.
All right, thank you. I will certainly vote for your confirmation, but I would like to just tell you that it is my very strong view that the problem, the main problem causing traffic congestion on the west side is not housing density. It's the fact that we have so many job sites in relation to the number of housing units we have, so that most people who work on the west side are driving in and out from somewhere else.
Okay, we have Mr. Burnson's motion to approve. Prepare the roll. That would be ten through twelve. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Again, you've been confirmed by the City Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Forthwith on those items.
Yes, next, Mr. President, starting with item number thirteen, we have south, the South Valley area, Mrs. Cecilla B. Berman and Mrs. Janelle L. Huff, if they would please come to the table. I've met with both these representatives personally, found them to be qualified, and also the committee did unanimously approve them, and I would move their approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
You are approved. Thank you for serving the city. That's thirteen and fourteen.
Yes, and we next have, we next have two more from the North Valley. They would come forward, please, Mrs. Stephanie Payne and Mr. George Tavares, and that would be the last two of those today. And I did meet with both of these representatives. These actually are people that represent the north portion of the valley, which I represent. I found them to be qualified, anxious to serve, and the committee also felt the same way and unanimously approved and recommended that the council approve their confirmation, and I would so move.
Okay, any? Mr. Padilla.
Hi, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to rise in support of both the nominations, but especially in support of Stephanie Payne. Proud to say she's from my district, and in addition to a long history that she's had, not only with the city, as part of our police department and in the community, as an active community member with several non-for-profit organizations and community-based organizations, and not only as a family member, wanted to highlight one of the experiences I think add greatly to what Stephanie brings to this commission, and that is her experience as a senior lead officer, which is how we got to know each other, knowing the ins and outs of the community, knowing the people within the community, knowing some of the challenges and some of the blessings that there are in the Northeast Valley, and taking the experience not only from a public safety perspective, but on a community empowerment and community improvement perspective to this commission, I think is a shining star that what the new charter is what was intended to do. So I'm proud to support her and ask for your approval.
Plus the fact she knows how to enforce if the rest of the commission don't do what she says, you know? Right? I would so move their approval, Mr. President.
Okay. Prepare the roll on fifteen and sixteen, is it?
Yes.
Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Again, thank you for serving the city, and we'll send it forthwith.
Forthwith, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Mr. President, item number thirty-two, the City Attorney has requested that be continued to Friday, June 16th.
There's no objection, unanimous vote.
Next item, Mr. President, items notice for public hearing. Item one is a public hearing. It's two street lighting districts.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number one? Montana and Sopota Boulevard Lighting District and Montclair and 28th Street have no cards, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on that? Ms. Miskowski moves. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
There is an ordinance involved. Is that correct? So the ordinance will go over one week, because there's an ordinance to pass on the first reading, must it be unanimous, and must be at least twelve members present. We don't have twelve members present today, and we don't expect twelve, so it'll go over one week. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items seventeen through thirty-one.
Okay, are any specials by council members, seventeen through thirty-one? Any specials? Seventeen through thirty-one. Twenty-seven is called special. Any other specials? That's continued. Okay, we have seventeen through thirty-one with the exception of twenty-seven. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, except item seventeen is an ordinance, and we'll have to, again, put that over one week. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items thirty-two through fifty-three.
Thirty, what is it, thirty-two?
Thirty-two through fifty-three.
Well, so thirty-two and thirty-three and thirty-five and thirty-six have been continued. Anybody want to be heard? We have some cards on forty-one, so we'll call that special. We'll call you later. Anybody else want to be heard on any of those items? If not, the public hearing is closed on all those except forty-one. Any special by council members? Any special by council members? We'll call you, please. If not, prepare the roll on thirty...
Thirty-four, thirty-seven through fifty-three, with the exception of forty-one.
Okay. Prepare the roll on those. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
Fourth with on thirty-four.
Just one at a time. Fourth with on thirty-four, forty-five, and what? And twenty-two. Fourth with on those items. And fourth with on forty-eight. And forty-four. Okay, next item.
Next item, Mr. President, the closed sessions, you wish to hold those on the desk or the one closed session item?
Yes, you don't need to ask on that.
Okay. Item twenty-seven called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
President, the independent panel from the Police Commission isn't here yet, so we can hold that on the desk.
Twenty-seven? Okay, then let's move on to the next item.
Item number forty-one has cards from the public.
Okay, we have, we have Michael Ribon, Michael Ribon and Mark Adams. Did you want to be heard on forty-one?
Yes, sir, thank you. Against forty-one, but I think there's one speaker for forty-one.
Morning, Mr. President, Michael Ribbons on item forty-one.
Go ahead.
This item, this property's been in REAP. We've provided to the various council members the proof of sign-offs from the various departments. It's my understanding there's been about eight inspectors on forty separate occasions on this property in the last six to seven months. They have deemed the property to be in full compliance. The task force has recommended that this property be removed from REAP. I don't represent the owner, I represent the mortgage holder. We are in the process of a judicial foreclosure and sought the appointment of a court-appointed receiver. It's my understanding that everything has been complied with. The committee has recommended that this property be removed. I understand you're going to hear from tenants or tenants committee regarding continuing violations. All I can say on that is it's been hide the ball. They have not been cooperative in any sense of the word. They have, according to their tenant representative, refused access to the inspectors, claiming that they did not receive proper notice. We have no evidence whatsoever before the council that there's any continuing violations, yet quite to the contrary, the people that the council vest with the authority to go out and make the determinations on the suitability and tenability of the property have now deemed it to be tenable. There are several other issues outside of the RSO, but the RSO, interestingly enough, states that the purpose, which is the council's purpose, was to provide just equitable and practical method to encourage compliance. We have compliance by the landlord, there's no reason to keep this property in the program any longer. We'd like to get the property removed, and we'd like to move forward with our foreclosure so that we can oust the current owner, and if there are future issues, we can address it at that time. Thank you.
Mark Adams, and then Martha Fernandez.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'd like to speak just briefly against item forty-one, and the, our request is that this matter be remanded to the REAP Commission for further investigation and findings based on the fact that there are continuing violations and that the slum conditions that led to this property going into REAP in the first place continue to exist. This is a well-known property. I think a number of the council members were there several years ago at a press conference. At that time, there was $345,000 in delinquent property taxes and DWP bills on this property. It went into REAP last year. I went and inspected the property personally yesterday and had a new high in the fight to slum house. I actually witnessed a rat dying in a, in a trap just yesterday afternoon about three o'clock at this building. So I strongly dispute the claim that the property's been fixed up. I'd also like to, I would just receive this morning, if I could make a copy of this, I'll submit it. This is an order from the Building and Safety Department dated May 19th, which was before the date that this building was supposedly signed off, citing the building for the fact that the elevator in this four-story apartment building has not operated for four years. I think that there's a question of what exactly happened among the different agencies here. I think that they were there, there's certainly been some work done at this building, but when a building doesn't have an elevator and hasn't had one when it was signed off by Building and Safety, I think it, on its face, raises a question to the council of whether the slum housing conditions that were existing here have in fact been corrected. Our recommendation is send it back to the REAP Commission for further inspection on a unit-by-unit basis to determine if the compliance has been had, and if not, for further action under the REAP program. Thank you. I'd like to introduce also the representative of the tenants in the building, because she also has some photographs that were taken there. Thank you.
Martha Fernandez.
My name is Martha Fernandez. Vengo del edificio 1723 James Wood, apartamento, numero apartamento 107. My name is Martha Fernandez, and I'm coming from 1723 James Woods Apartment 104. Vengo en nombre de todos los que vivimos ahí, los inquilinos. Venimos, yo vengo en representación diciendo que les pedimos que no remuevan el caso. El edificio sigue malas condiciones, todos los apartamentos, hay mucha rata, mucha cucaracha, muchos niños enfermos. I'm here talking in behalf of the tenants, and I'm representing them, and the reason I'm here is because I'm against to get the building off the REAP. The reason is because we still have a lot of violations that haven't been taken care of. Últimamente nuestros apartamentos no ha pasado ninguna inspección, es lo que nosotros decimos. ¿Cómo es posible que quieran sacar el edificio del caso si último no ha habido ninguna inspección? The reason we're here also is because some of the inspections, they haven't been taken care of inside their units. They haven't even seen inspectors inside their units. That's why they wonder why they're getting out the building out of the REAP when they haven't been there yet. Les pedimos si quieren ir a inspeccionar, o sea, para que vean las condiciones, cómo estamos viviendo. Somos personas y tenemos niños y tenemos necesidades de vivir como la gente. We would like you guys, please, to go and inspect every single unit so you can see exactly how we live. We have a lot of children, and we would really want you to consider. Okay, thank you. Gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, you want to be heard?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Wait a minute, let the lady finish first.
I'm sorry, she has some pictures that were taken the past three days, and we'd like to submit it.
Give those pictures? All right, go ahead.
My name is Robert Gluckstein.
Pull the microphone up.
And I hold a first mortgage on the property, and through the receiver, I'm the one who has put up the money to correct all of the deficiencies from the Building and Safety Department, from the Fire Department, from the Plumbing Department. I have spent, advanced over half a million dollars, and the building has been inspected. It has been signed off by the Building Department, the Fire Department, an expensive $25,000 fire alarm system monitored has been installed, the Health Department signed it off, and what I respectfully ask the council to do is to make the system work. The repairs were made to the property. Yes, there's additional problems. The tenants would like to continue forever paying half rent, and that is, but the problems they mentioned, for example, the elevator, the elevator is in working condition, and we can prove it to the elevator inspector. The notice hasn't been sent to the receiver yet because it was only issued May 19th. The elevator is working. The reason it's not turned on today is because of vandalism, constant vandalism. The receiver has to have a security guard in the building. These tenants are running wild in the building because they're paying half rent, and all other issues do not involve the REAP program, and the tenants are refusing entrance to their apartments so they can continue to say they have this problem or that problem. But my attorney, we have a form from the Building and Safety Department, from the task force, saying that all the work that they required has been signed off, and if you want the system to work, we believe that we're here to be relieved from REAP. In fact, REAP has sent a letter to the tenants stating that effect, that on the first of July, they are to resume paying their rent.
All right, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... All right, the public hearing is closed. Fourth with on forty-six, Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, Mr. Hernandez's office, this is in CD1. It does say CD15 on something, but it's incorrect. It's in CD1. Mr. Hernandez's office has asked me to move that we remand this back to the REAP Committee for a further hearing. Just to give you some idea of the issues that were involved, this is the file on this one building. So we're not talking about a building that has always been kept up to standard and then was allowed to slip temporarily and suddenly came back. This is an example of those wonderful bait-and-switch owners. Every time one gets too heavily cited, they sell it to someone else. I know this building very well. I've got buildings just like it in my district, so do many of you and yours. I don't know the particulars of this case, but the best place to find it out is in committee, in the REAP Committee, and that is the council member who represents the area requests is that this be remanded back to the REAP Committee for further review and discussion. If they then find that everything's okay, I have no doubt that this will come back to council, but that would be Mr. Hernandez's request, and I will move it on his behalf.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council, I'm a little confused with this. Obviously, I'm willing to go along with Mr. Hernandez's request, but I do want to state one thing. The purpose of REAP is not to keep tenants from paying half rent. The purpose of REAP is to...
We know that.
I understand, but that's, we've had claims on both sides. What I have heard is that the various complaints have been signed off, and I have no problem with referring it back to make, you know, to see if they are, but I just want to state that I feel as strongly as any of you, because we all have these buildings, even in my district, there was one today. We have these buildings, we want to make sure, and I don't think anybody, maybe you and, you and I have probably fought harder for cleaning up some of these buildings than anybody else in this council, but it should not be taken advantage of. The purpose is not to take advantage of people who take care of their property. In this particular case, I understand this is a foreclosure. It's not a sale. So let's refer it back, but I want to, I want to make it very clear that I will not support...
three days ago. These are rats that were trapped three days ago. We have the elevator problem. This building still has problems.
Mr. Holden.
What about this half rent? They actually pay half rent? Then there's no incentive on the part of the tenant to ever say the thing is ready to go?
It's not their decision.
Huh?
It's not their decision.
I understand that, but the fact of the matter is that if they're paying half rent, and the man just said a little while ago that he can't turn the elevator on because of vandalism. You know, it seemed to me that it's the responsibility of the tenants also, if they want to live in a really nice place, is to report that people who are destroying or defacing the property. And I think maybe you're the translator. I mean, I got to tell you, that's, that's one of the worst thing that could happen, is that they too can exploit the system, misuse the system. Now, let me ask you a question. You saying you, you hold the first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How long have you had the first?
Since 1987.
Oh, so you're already entrapped. Well, I understand. I know, but he has a first on it. I mean, he's losing his money. In order to protect his investment, he has to make the repairs. The other guys took a walk, ripped it off and took a walk. That happens all the time. Another thing I don't like is, please, sir, is that they keep changing ownership. Now, we got to have some kind of a law that when that happens, in order for them to circumvent whatever rules are, that we just take possession of the property and let that be it? And that we go in and make the repairs, compensate the first trustee who owns the first? And let's move on with providing some, some good standards and good property for people to live in. But I tell you that the pendulum swings both ways, that very often the tenants do intentionally destroy their property. And we have to begin to think about what we're going to do about that. In those cases where the landlord have not been responsive, fine, let's hold their feet to the fire and continue to do that. But I think we should not close our eyes to the fact that all landlords are bad and all tenants are good, because that is not the case at all. So I'm going to support Mr. Hernandez, and you go work with Mrs. Hernandez's staff.
All right, Ms. Goldberg, no, Mr. Fuhr.
Can I ask the city attorney to come forward, please? One has to be careful what we're just for, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Bob, could you give us a very brief report on this?
Did you see him jump? I don't know.
And what's wrong with that?
Is he anticipating something?
This is a good thing, John. Mr. Bob, go ahead.
President of the council, members of the council. My name is Richard Bobb. I supervise the slum housing task force, which is comprised of Building and Safety, the County Health Department, and the Fire Department. You may remember that when this building first went into REAP in August of 98, that there was a receiver in charge, and there was some issue as to whether or not the building could even go into REAP because it was a receiver, and I argued strenuously that it should go into REAP. In fact, the building has been signed off by the three agencies, but I'm very concerned, based on what I've heard today, that perhaps the inspectors did not get into every unit. I know that the inspectors are advised that they're supposed to get into every unit. Building and Safety makes every attempt. The Fire, the Fire Department doesn't get into units, but the Health Department makes it their policy to get into every unit that they can. But there seems to be a diversion here of what is, it's just not making sense.
So you would support Ms. Goldberg's recommendation on behalf of Mr. Hernandez, that it get further evaluation at the committee level?
Correct, but I would modify it slightly to say that the reason that it needs to get more information, more review, is specifically to have the inspectors go back out and determine whether or not the units are untenitable or not. Because under Section 15206B2, the council can terminate REAP at any time, whenever it deems that it's no longer necessary. And certainly, further investigation to determine whether or not the units are untenitable is a very good reason to send this back.
Point of information, Mr. President, point of information. What is the status of the amount of rent that's paid while it's in REAP?
That's kind of a complex answer, question, because there are two kinds of answers. First of all, I want to clarify something that I think may be misconstrued in the council's mind. This building was in the rent reduction program, so at one time, the tenants were paying a percentage of their normal rate. It is out of that program at this time. They are now paying their full rent to REAP.
To REAP?
Yes, but they are not paying a portion of their rent. It's not in rent reduction anymore. They're paying their full rent.
So there's no incentive not to let somebody in?
That's correct.
As was alleged there would be.
That's correct. This is, they're paying their full amount into REAP. The reason is because so many of the violations have been corrected. Clearly, the building is in better shape. You also should know that there are criminal charges that are pending against the owner right now, and that arraignment is set for next month. The current owner.
Well, it hasn't been foreclosed yet.
The foreclosure has not occurred yet.
Okay. Ms. Goldberg.
Hence, the foreclosure. I mean, in my humble opinion. You see, when you get in too deep, then you say, well, I'm walking away from the building, let them foreclose, and then some allegedly new party buys it out of foreclosure at a bargain price, and the cycle goes on and on and on. We have been through this in my district with the city attorney's office helped to deal with some of this many times, and I'm sure many of you have as well. I am simply saying, I don't know what the situation in this building. It may have gotten better. That's wonderful. The council office is saying they've received enough complaints that they would like the committee to look at it one more time. And I would move that and urge you to send it back to committee and have that one more look taken place.
Okay, let's, okay, prepare the roll on Mrs. Goldberg's motion for on behalf of Mr. Hernandez. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Ms. Richard Robinson. Yeah, we got it. Members of the council, I wish you would have been here on time. We could have gotten through all this without hearing from Mr. Holden once, but you failed me.
There ain't a lot of brass around here, Mr. Curry. Better not speak out loud. Mr. President, members of council, Mr. Bernardi is appearing at Leon Steakhouse at Vineland and Victory Monday at 7:00 in your district. He will be playing every second Monday. Again, Mr. Bernardi is online at www.nonisource, that's N-O-N-I-S-O-U-R-C-E, nonisource.com. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards we have, so the public comment period is closed. We still have item 27 before us. All right, we were waiting for staff.
Mr. President, we do have someone here from the independent panel. I can make the presentation of the committee report. This is the report from the Public Safety Committee on the motion raising questions, both by Ms. Walters, who brought in the motion, and other members of the council, on the Rampart Independent Review Panel. Its composition, its balance in terms of gender, in terms of racial mix, in terms of profession. And we received some information, including a report on May 17th from the Inspector General about the increased diversity. Talked about what was going on. It talked about the increase in numbers. When we first had the independent panel announced, it was some 41 members. In the middle of May, when we were receiving this report, it was at that time about 124 members. It has now grown to 141 members. The Public Safety Committee held a hearing on this and heard from an awful lot of interested community participants who were concerned and raising some of the same questions that the council members had been raising. As a consequence of that meeting, as a consequence of some other interaction, some of the many people who actually testified in front of the Public Safety Committee are now on the independent panel. They are part of the working groups themselves. The independent panel, we got a status report, has divided into eight working groups. It, as I say, now has about 140 individual members. The majority of them are serving as volunteers. The vast majority are serving as volunteers. It includes the panel, many former members of the Christopher Commission and the Webster Commission, as well as those who have some experience, work in federal, state, and local law enforcement and criminal justice system. So it, it contains an awful lot of people who have some knowledge, some experience, some looking at this issue from afar to be able to understand the issues that are being presented to us in the entirety of what they are dealing with. As, just to remind the council, the eight working groups are dealing with areas in risk management, disciplinary system, ethics, culture, and communications, civilian oversight of the police department, the Rampart Working Group where this all started, officer-involved shootings and the use of force policies, general operations, hiring, personnel, and training. The report that we received in May outlined the scope of that work and that it is all-inclusive. I don't think there is an issue that the council hasn't dealt with in the last number of years that is not being re-looked at again with this set of independent eyes. And again, I want to reinforce that it is independent. We have here today Mr. Richard Druyan, who is the general council lead of the independent panel, to talk about what they're doing. He told our Public Safety Committee that he is not working in concert with the IG, not working in concert with the commission. They are independent and coming to their report, which they will give to the commission sort of unfettered and uncensored. As I said, we did have a number of issues raised about the diversity of the panel and as a consequence, the ultimate credibility of what the recommendation would be. And as a consequence of that investigation and that, those issues, there have been an increased number of people who have been added to the Rampart Panel, including a number of ministers, including a number of people who are involved in community-based organizations. And I would like at this time to invite Mr. Druyan to come forward to answer, to give us any further update at this time, as well as to answer any questions on the part of the council. Mr. Druyan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, members of the council. As Councilmember Mizzoukowski indicated, my name is Richard Druyan. I'm a partner at Munger, Tolles &amp; Olson, and I'm the general counsel of the Rampart Independent Review Panel. The panel was formed under the authority of the Police Commission, but we are independent of the commission. There are no limits whatsoever on what we can investigate, what we can look at with respect to the practices, procedures, and operations of the Los Angeles Police Department, including the role of the commission itself, the structure of the commission, the authority of the commission, the effectiveness of the commission, the role of the IG, the resources that the IG has, the information that the IG has, the independence of the IG. The only thing that the commission has done is asked us to look at some issues. For example, they've asked us to look at the issue of the senior lead officers, Special Order Number 40. But in no way have they limited the scope of our investigation. And the commission will receive the report at the same time that it is publicly released. There's going to be no advanced review of the report by the commission or by the Los Angeles Police Department. There's no editorial or substantive control over the report by either the commission or the police department. We are actually up to 146 members as we speak. 121 of those members are volunteers who have devoted substantial time and energy to this project to date. There are 25 investigators who are being paid at a reduced rate, some of whom have former LAPD experience, many of whom who have federal, former federal law enforcement experience. I would estimate, as of today, we have devoted thousands of volunteer hours to this project. We have reached out and interviewed or contacted hundreds of witnesses or individuals who we think could provide us with input and information into this project. Most of the members of our panel are attorney, the majority of them are attorneys, but we have many other professions represented. We have academics, accountants, investigators, religious leaders, management consultants, community leaders, community and youth service providers, business executives, communication specialists, healthcare professionals on our panel. With respect to the ethnic and gender composition, 36% of our members are minority, 26% of our members are women. The percentages of minorities and women are slightly higher if you look at only the volunteers. And the purpose of the working groups is to conduct a thorough review of the Los Angeles Police Department's policies, practices, and operations, what caused the Rampart scandal, what impact the scandal has had on the credibility of the department, assess the board of inquiry report prepared by the department, assess the status of the implementation of the Christopher Commission reforms, and make our own findings and recommendations. We are reviewing and analyzing hundreds of reports, policies, procedures. We're reviewing the board of inquiry report and all of the backup. We're interviewing witnesses and seeking input from various constituencies. We anticipate, we've already started this process, but we expect to be talking to current and former police officers, current and retired LAPD command staff, academics and experts, community religious and political leaders, many members of the panel, excuse me, of the council. We will contact and ask for your views, particularly with respect to the issue of civilian oversight, but overall with respect to the Los Angeles Police Department. Residents and business owners, current and former police commissioners, civil rights attorneys, and representatives and advocates of interest groups. Example, one of our working groups has already contacted 16 civil rights attorneys, it's just one group, and received substantive input from six different civil rights attorneys. Another group was, received a contact from the Coalition for Police Accountability and sent two letters back to that coalition inviting their views and input. The only limitation on our group's work is the criminal investigations and criminal prosecutions. We are mindful of those investigations and prosecutions, and we want to make sure we don't do anything that will interfere with the ability of the district attorney or the United States attorney to criminally prosecute any officers who have violated the law. And very quickly, I just, Councilmember Mizzoukowski indicated the scope and the eight working groups. I would emphasize that one of the things we are looking at is the role of the Police Commission and the effectiveness of civilian oversight and the structure and the information that the Police Commission has, including the review of use of force, review of civilian complaints, the whole scope of the Police Commission's activities. We are committed to doing a thorough and independent review. Our timetable is to have something to the public by October 1. I will say, however, we have a very ambitious agenda that keeps expanding, and we're going to try to meet that target date, and that's what we're shooting for. And with that, I would be, welcome any questions that anybody may have.
When did you say you expect to complete the report?
Our target date, Mr. President, is October 1st.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, you said that there are 36% of the panel are people of color. How does that break down within African-American, Asian, and Latino?
14% African-American, 14% Hispanic, and 6% Asian.
So 14% of the panel is African-American and 14% is Latino, but probably 100% of the people involved as victims are African-American or Latino. So do you think that that's a problem?
I don't think it's a problem. I think what is critical here is to make sure that we have a diverse penalty, panel that will have insight, input from those communities, and more importantly, that we reach out into those communities and get the information that they have.
Well, with all due respect, I would feel a whole lot better if the panel reflected a lot better the folks that are the most victimized by these problems. I would feel a whole lot better if you had, what, you said most of them are attorneys. Are any of them a part of the defense panel of the city?
There are certainly a number of the attorneys who practice criminal defense law exclusively and have been...
And have offices in the general Rampart area?
I don't believe that any of the criminal defense lawyers have offices in the Rampart
Well, with all due respect, I would feel a whole lot better if the panel reflected a lot better the folks that are the most victimized by these problems. I would feel a whole lot better if you had, you said most of them are attorneys. Are any of them a part of the defense panel of the city?
There are certainly a number of the attorneys who practice criminal defense law exclusively and have been--
And have offices in the general Rampart area?
I don't believe that any of the criminal defense lawyers have offices in the Rampart area.
Don't have a practice that would come into contact on a regular basis with people who say, "I've been framed by the police"?
Well, they are not, the members of the panel are not civil rights attorneys. They are--
I'm not talking about civil rights. I'm talking about the defense panel.
I can't tell you, Councilmember, whether or not any of the members have had that experience or not. I just don't know.
Well, you see, I'm very disturbed by the fact that that hasn't been something that we've been careful to be sure that happens. One of the things that happens when you have a volunteer panel is that only people from certain types of practices can be volunteers. They aren't necessarily located in the 13th, the 1st, the 14th, the 7th council districts, the 8th, or the 9th, or the 10th. And yet, that's where most of this is occurring. So you're asking to get their input as witnesses, but they're not going to be involved in seriously bringing to bear their personal experience, week in and week out, defending people who say they've had these problems. We know that there are no guilty people in prison. I'm not arguing that there aren't a lot of folks who say, "I didn't do it, I was framed." But it is different. I think you'd have to admit, to have a practice of clients who you believe have been dealt with unfairly in these matters than to have a practice elsewhere in the city. And I really have to say to you that I am very disturbed, I am continuously disturbed by the underrepresentation of African-Americans and Latinos and Asian Pacific Islanders on this panel, and I am even more concerned that the people who represent those defendants who claim on a routine basis and whose complaints have not been, in my opinion, heard, which is how we get into this situation, are not on this panel. And they're not on this panel because they are in practices that are neighborhood-based and cannot afford not to be paid. So as soon as we go to a voluntary system, we systematically exclude people who ought to be on panels like this, who have personal experience day-to-day with this. And I will tell you that I am very concerned, Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Goldberg, if you have some recommendations, you send them to me, I'll get them to the panel.
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Chick?
Okay, I'll press my--
My question--
Well, somebody pushed your button again. All right, Mr. Holden?
Mr. Farrar, thanks for the offer. I think, who's that guy who's in charge of pointing his committee members?
Jerry.
What's his name?
The President's Commissioner, Jerry Treil.
Right, well, I sent some names over there, people who wanted to volunteer and--
You didn't go through the right channel, Mr. Holden.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what Ms. Goldberg's been talking about. What is the right channel? And it's not the Commission that you're working on with the composition being what it is. And the fact of the matter is that personally, I indict the Commission before they even come back with a report, and I make the statement that it's not going to be relevant. It's like a computer, junk in, junk out. You know, it's almost take a jar of jelly beans. They all look different. But when they're all together, it looks like it's some kind of a beautiful bouquet of some sort. But in this case, that's not the case. They're not all together. I mean, what you see, the problem is you're seeing it from your eyes, all these attorneys who didn't, who were not practicing as defense attorneys. Or you see even amongst the minorities who come from the lifestyle where they are not even involved in these kinds of events. You didn't see people who deal with repressing gang or working with gang or gang prevention programs. You didn't want them on this Commission to deliberate, to provide the information. They was offered, you know, nothing's going to change. Repressive action will be levied against minorities in the future as has been in the past, totally insensitive. I mean, I asked AI who's on your committee the other day, I said, "In 1965, when they had to watch riots, was it your opinion that we should just go in and shoot down all these black people?" You know what he said to me? "Well, I've grown, I've changed." He didn't say, "I didn't, that was not my thought." It was in his mind, impregnated in his brain, and he still lives with it. How's he going to fix the problem? Can't, not alone. He can't, just being associated with people who think like he does, live the way he does, act the way he does, and see minorities as being absolutely different and less than, less than, much less than what they are. Then how do they fix the problem? If they're less than. And so what you need to do is co-mingle the panel in a way where you can get a report that'll be meaningful and beneficial and be accepted. I wouldn't accept it, and I'd be just like the common guy on the street. I'm not going to accept it. I'll tell you in advance, you can't come up with anything that would cause me to believe that all the thoughts went into it to the extent where it's going to be, it's going to stop the problem for the future. And I went 13 seconds over. I stopped at 13 because I don't want to go 14, Mr. President.
Ms. Goldberg?
I just want to know, you have a working committee that's on Rampart Division itself.
Yes.
Are you looking at Hollenbeck? 77th Street?
Not separately in the way we are looking at Rampart. Rampart frames the inquiry, and it will set the context for what the other working groups are doing and the recommendations. But we're not looking separately at Hollenbeck or any other particular area.
Well, let me make a recommendation, that you look at least at 77th and at Hollenbeck. Hollenbeck, because of the number of complaints that we receive, and I have no way of knowing if they're correct or not, but I know there are enormous numbers from there. And 77th, because of recent indictments by the federal courts that have come out of 77th, that's the only reason, I don't know, they don't call me about 77th, so I don't know about 77th. Let me suggest that those two be done separately, and maybe by the Rampart group, because you might find a pattern in practice and you might not, and it would be good to know that, because those are where the complaints are coming from. And if you haven't looked at it, you can't tell the public, "We looked at it and found nothing." See, the public wants to know, how big is this? And in many parts of the city, there is widespread disbelief that it is only in one division. Your Commission, from the point of view of those of us who would like to say, "Here is the scope of the problem, and here's the fix," would like to know that you've looked at all of these things, and can put our minds at ease that we, an independent group, looked at these various areas where there were high number of complaints. Are you looking at the actual complaints made by people?
Yes, we'll be looking at some of the actual complaints. Not every one, but certainly a representative sample.
Do you get a chance, if you want to, to see all of them in one division, so that you can get a range of what kinds of things there are?
Yes.
And someone's doing that?
Yes, we have access to all of the documents and information in the Police Department, and there are no limits, and we've been able to get access to whatever we need.
So that includes confidential, otherwise confidential records?
Yes.
So you have complete access?
We have complete access to all information, other than the kinds of things that are highly confidential, that really aren't pertinent to our work. But with respect to personnel records, complaint records, those kinds of records, we have access, and the Police Department has been cooperative.
Okay. Well, I will just reiterate that I think that we are grateful, and I don't mean to sound anything other than that, for the people who are volunteering. That's thousands of hours we could never afford to buy, but there should be a budget that allows us to hire onto this panel people from different walks of life who could not afford without getting the amount of pay they were making in their regular job. Otherwise, you are going to have--
Thank you.
--a lack of representation from those various areas, in my opinion, that are the most impacted by this behavior.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, all I was going to simply raise to state is that if any of you are receiving complaints about the Hollenbeck Division or the Northeast Division, which are in my district, that I would request that you send me copies and forward that information to me. And once again, I will call and ask on the public to feel free to step forward to our office, which is on First in Chicago, which is about half a block away from the Hollenbeck Division, if you feel that anyone at the Hollenbeck Division is treating you unfairly or has in any way victimized you. One of the other issues I think that Ms. Goldberg raised, which I think we have to figure out also, is, one of my main concerns is that if we're simply looking for the coordinated effort that occurred at Rampart, in terms of the supervisors in coordination with the field officers victimizing individuals, that I think we're going to miss the rogue cops. The cops that I really think are more prevalent than the coordinated efforts that occurred at Rampart. So it simply suggests that we not lose sight of the fact that there are two different groups that I am most concerned about. One is the coordinated effort, which I believe occurred at Rampart, and the other is the independent rogue cops, who are probably a little more difficult to detect, but we need to work out some way to get to them. Because I'm convinced that in an institution like the Los Angeles Police Department with 9,000 officers, it would be naive to think that it's not statistically, that the number of rogue cops isn't statistical enough to be spread beyond Rampart. I think you just have to look at it in terms of the fact that we're dealing with so many officers, that there are going to be problem officers not isolated in one division. And I think that's one of the things that I have been telling people, that they need to look at the fact that what we really want, and what I've been telling people over and over and over, is the most important part of the process is to identify the bad officers and get them off the force, and then we'll deal with the prosecution. So I simply just want to suggest that we not lose sight of the fact that there will be individual rogue cops throughout the system who may end up being in Hollenbeck, who may end up in 77th, who may end up in Pacific or in Foothill. But that the Rampart situation, the coordinated effort between the supervisors and the field officers presents its own unique problems, but not to lose sight of the fact that we have other individual renegade officers that we need to feder out.
Mr. Holden?
Hey, Mr. Pacheco. You're the prosecutor, right? Did you ever prosecute people where they went to jail? And where they had police officers testify against them? Could I hear you in the mic?
Yes, I've done all those.
Well, maybe that's why some people don't want to come to you, they think you're prosecutor. For the same reason, they want a different mix on the, please, a different mix on this-- Would you lay off, buster? Well, what if it is, then? Shut him up or move him out.
Holden, would you please not be--
All right. I'm just saying that, what I'm trying to point out to, that that's, that could be some reason why they call us sometimes, is what I'm saying.
I just asked that you shared the information so I could move on.
I'd be delighted to do that with you.
All right, though I do appreciate the fact that you're right, that some people may have difficulty--
Yeah.
--based on my prior work. But I think people need to step forward and at least provide the information--
That's right. And we need to give Mr. Pacheco an opportunity to express that sentiment. Period. No, sir. You're a lawyer?
Yes, I am.
What firm do you work with?
Munger, Tolson, Olson.
Oh, yeah, I thought your face looked familiar. I rest my case. You know what I mean.
All right, Mr. Burnson?
Mr. Burnson, no one else wants to be heard, so this is just a note and file. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Druyan. We appreciate you being here in spite of some of the remarks, but that's life with the City Council.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, the next item.
Next item, Mr. President, you have special one. It's a motion presented by Councilmember Goldberg for Mr. Hernandez, and it's seconded by Mr. Holden, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
City attorney?
Just read it.
City attorney, where is the city attorney?
Mr. Chair, that is going to be, Mr. President, that's going to be actually Rule 16 on next Tuesday's agenda.
Okay, then we don't have to worry about it.
Because in discussing the matter with the council deputy, it's not clear that there are findings in front of the council that can be made. Further, the governor has two weeks to deliberate on this, and--
Okay, so the special one will become a Rule 16 item.
Thank you.
Next item?
Motion for posting and referral.
There are no objections, unanimous vote.
Council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused. City business Wednesday, July 5th meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, we have a closed session item, so everybody not involved with a closed session, please leave the council chamber. Forty-five minutes. Okay, we're back in open session. Members of the council have a pleasant announcement today. It may not be pleasant to her, but she is having a birthday party today. Laura Chick has now reached 29 years old.
She is still younger than she is.
It's her 30th anniversary of her 29th birthday. Happy birthday, and Michael Fear will lead us into happy birthday. No, don't, that'll ruin the song. Okay, what do we have on the desk?
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
The desk is clear. Do we have any, anything else? Mr. Fear, Mr. Savornic is asking for cannolis, or what? Adjourning of motions. Would everyone please stand? I don't know if we need to stand anymore, these motions are getting longer and longer. Hey, Tim? Tim? Mr. Savornic?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I would like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Lisa Marie Junger's pass away on June 2nd. She was a lifelong resident of the San Peter Community and passed much too young at the age of 30.
Wow.
She was a beautiful individual that touched the lives of many. She always managed to bring out the best in everyone, no matter the situation. She will be missed sorely by her family, friends, and coworkers alike. She is survived by her mother, Edel, her stepfather, David, her sisters, Lisa Wall, Nivela Roscoe, and her brother, Archie Junger.
Hi, the council is adjourned.